Next, from Springfield, we sit down with Roger Eddy, Executive Director of the Illinois Association of School Boards. We talked to Mr. Eddy about whether school districts are receiving an adequate amount of funding, whether America's education system is competitive on a global level, some of the criticisms and support for Common Core education reform, and to what degree the governor and other political leaders are engaged in improving Illinois education. This runs about 40 minutes.
Roger Eddy, thanks for joining us again on the Illinois Channel.
Happy to be here, thank you.
Let's just start off, I'll tell our viewers that you're also a board member of the Illinois Channel, so we can get that out of the way. But, we're really talking to you today as the head of the Illinois Association of School Boards, and as we begin a new fiscal year. It's a daunting year budget-wise, although the education budget was signed by the governor. Let's start there, from a financial standpoint, what are you hearing from schools as far as having the resources to do the job this year?
Well, obviously, the fact that there is a budget, and money is flowing in the form of general state aid, and hopefully mandated categoricals will be paid on time. It was a big relief to school districts across the state when the governor signed the budget. So, we obviously are applauding him for that action, because there are many school districts in the state that without general state aid, without that infusion, would have had trouble opening, and certainly sustaining the types of programs that they believe provide a quality education to the children of their community. So, we're happy for that. We're like everyone else, though, you know, we're still at a prorated amount, and although that proration went from like 89% to 92% for most districts, and hopefully even with some additional infusion for districts that are property poor and the most needy, that might even go up some. We're all happy for that, we'd love to see it at 100%, at least, and remember-
Just because some people don't know the language. So, I believe we're supposed to be spending, is it 6,000?
6119.
6119 is supposed to be the lowest level of funding, but in fact, we've been below that. Last year was 89% of that number.
Right.
And you're saying now it'll be like 92%.
92%. And we also have to remember that that 6119 is not the number that the Education Funding Advisory Board sets. The EFAB level is well over 8,000. They're saying that is the minimum amount that we should be providing in support. So, the 6119 foundation level really kind of represented the best that the state could do several years ago, as compared to what the recommendation was. Now, even hitting that 6119, obviously in past years, has been difficult. So, the prorated amount of that was 89% last year, and there was additional appropriation that allowed for that to be now at 92%. And again, there's a separate appropriation for the schools that are in the most need, that could bring it up maybe 95, 96%, we're hoping. So, that's all good news, obviously. School districts at least are operating with more support than they did a year ago in most cases. But, they would argue, and rightfully so, especially in those districts that don't have property value and other resources, that it's still going to be difficult for them to provide the quality services for their children.
One of the things too, we've talked over the years to different people within education, and they would argue that especially when money is tight, sometimes there's mandates from the state to spend money where, as a manager, they would say, "We don't want to spend money there, it's ineffective. If you would untie our hands and allow us to use our financial resources the way we want, we'll be better off." Where do we stand as far as, I think, let's say now that we have Governor Rounier in office, what is his attitude relative to perhaps getting rid of some of those mandates that have bound the hands of school officials?
Well, as you know, there are all kinds of mandates. Some have to do with life, health, safety of children, some have to do with curriculum, some have to do with just what folks believe to be good ideas for schools, and most of the time, they're well-intended. The problem with those types of mandates, even the well-intended and the ones that we would even say, "Yeah, we should be doing that," they're not coming with funding. And, we believe that there are a number of ways that mandates can be loosened up, and school districts can make decisions that are best for their children and their community. And we think that the governor's office agrees with us on that. We're seeing a lot of support for less regulation, not just in school districts, but in business, and I think we have to go in that direction. A good example related to curricular mandates might be the PE mandate. School districts have to make a lot of tough decisions, and in many cases, because of that mandate, they may not be able to keep a kindergarten class size at 20, because they have to have daily physical education. Now, do we think daily physical education is important? Of course we do, everyone does. But, is it more important than kindergarten class size or keeping reading coaches? We have a mandate that protects physical education at the expense of that decision that locally might be, "Let's do PE every other day, let's try to ensure that kids are getting physical fitness outside of school with some kind of logging with parents." A lot of creative ideas out there, but they're not allowed to do those things, because they have to have physical education every day. Well, we believe that local elected officials, boards of education and their administrators, can probably make decisions that are in the best interest of maybe keeping the reading coach, or the class size at the elementary down. So, so far, again, the governor's office has been very open to the suggestions we have related to mandate relief, and we're pleased with that.
You know, maybe we should back up and just start maybe with the big picture, and sometimes we jump into the details and people, you know, can't see the forest for the trees. So, in the big picture, how is Illinois, how would you rate the state of education in Illinois, knowing what you know, and you were a school supervisor in the past?
Yeah.
Now you've been, again, working, so you get input from all the different members of the school board from around the state. So, you pretty much have your finger, I would think, on the pulse of what's happening. How is it now in Illinois, and how would you say we compare with maybe, if you know, some of the surrounding Midwestern states?
Well, I think, I think public education in Illinois is better than it's ever been. There are a number of key indicators, especially having to do with some demographics for students in areas that we would consider maybe would be difficult to show improvement. We're seeing improvements in Latino education scores, we're seeing improvements in poor. Now, are they where we want them to be? No. But, it is getting better, and it's been at a time when it's difficult for school districts to find the resources to support those areas of improvement. We've made a great investment in early childhood, which by the way, I believe to be one of the most important areas that we can invest in, to make sure that those students that are at most risk of academic failure have the type of supports they need. So, I think in terms of really trying to be on the cutting edge, we've also implemented some reforms related to principal preparation, I think that are going to pay some dividends down the road, if we make some adjustments to that. We seem to be choking the supply right now. We maybe have run the throttle a little bit too far toward making sure that, you know, those standards are high, and we have to look at all those things. But, we've made some real key decisions in the last four or five years, I think, that are helpful, and education's in a good place. My concern is, of course, that, you know, we do begin to look at only one measure, and that might not be the best measure, and sometimes we rely pretty heavily on assessment. And we're changing, away from ISAT to PARK, and those key indicators may look like they're going down, but we're measuring against a different set of standards. So, we have to be careful what that appearance is in the next several years.
That's where I was going to go on one hand. So, we measure through testing, you know, how different people are doing around the state, so we try to have some collective sense of how kids are doing in Quincy versus Effingham versus Chicago, et cetera. And use a standardized test, right?
Right.
So, it's the same thing. Now, what is the PARK, for those who don't know? A lot of this language, you know, is foreign to people.
Right, right.
But basically, it's a test to measure how kids are doing, but it's a newer test, right?
Well, and it measures English literacy and math, right now, 3rd through 8th grade, and once at the high school. The current test is the ISAT, and it was based on the Illinois Learner Standards that were passed in 1997. Illinois adopted Common Core standards several years ago, the State Board of Education, and the PARK is an assessment of how our students are doing against those new standards. One of the dangers is to compare Quincy with Effingham, with Oblong, with wherever. I mean, those comparisons really don't serve the purpose, the primary purpose of assessment. Assessments are to improve instruction, and to allow planning so that each individual student's achievement can improve. Sometimes we use them for comparisons between districts that are so different. Those districts themselves are different, the students are different. So, it's used for the wrong reason, in my view, and then we begin to compare to other states, because of the level of funding of education in those other states and other factors, those comparisons are almost impossible to make on a scale that really is useful. Plus, they're meaningless as far as improving education. If we concentrate on assessment in order to improve instruction, then we're using assessment for the right reason.
If I'm hearing you right, you might say, as you just said, it's wrong to compare the students from one locality to another. You would be arguing, I think, that you want to look at the progress within Quincy or within Effingham, to see how the students are doing, is that-
Or even measured against that individual student, and setting goals, and, you know, a more competency-based education system. And I think we're moving that direction, I think the more we move that direction, the better we serve every child. So, you know-
But here's what I'd like to address, because I think people hear this and go, "Well, wait a minute, as Americans, we're going to have to be competing against the Chinese, the Japanese, you know, the Germans."
Mm-hmm.
Ultimately, isn't there a standard of which you're supposed to be an educated human being on the planet?
Yes.
And not just say, "Are you doing better relative to where you were last year," but, "Are you going to be competitive, and is America going to be competitive 50 years from now?"
Well, I think we have a pretty good track record in the world over the last 50 years. I mean, we can go back to Sputnik and talk about how America's schools were falling apart. Every single decade or generation worries about that, but we continue to be the beacon in the world. So, I think some of that is overstated, that's my view. Now, should we pay attention? Yes. But remember, things are so different, and I hear about Finland, and they have a great education system, but I love my country and what we do with children on a basis that considers all of the other skills, talents, and abilities of our kids, not just, you know, what the folks in Finland believe to be important. We believe democracy's important, we believe citizenship's important, and we also think there's a whole other set of skills that you can't measure on an assessment that, you know, measures English literacy and math. That's why Vision 2020 has adopted and pushed for a balanced accountability methodology. And by the way, the governor signed into law the bill that we brought forward for balanced accountability. And accountability is more than a test score in literacy, math, and language arts, given one day of the year, or one two-week period of the year, to a group of students. It should include all of those other things that are important to us in our society in the United States. So, hopefully, we'll move toward that. Assessment is important, and we cannot downplay the importance of measuring how our students are doing against a high set of standards, absolutely. But, it's more important that we measure it along with some other vital measures that we care a lot about, to tell whether or not public education's doing well. Unfortunately, the accountability system that we're kind of moving away from with, you know, the no child left behind era kind of behind us, is a system that hopefully is looking at multiple measures, and we can be part of making sure that the right things are measured in communities.
Let's talk, because we had, you and I have talked on camera before about Vision 2020, but I'm sure people have so many other things they need to be reminded of.
Sure.
So, a group of individuals, or organizations, I should say, came together, kind of did a self-assessment, instead of having lawmakers, often it was like a top-down. The lawmakers would tell the schools, "You have to do this." But Vision 2020 came from, I would say, a bottom-up, where the schools said, "Here's what we think needs to be done, and here's our game plan." And that's, was labeled, that set of goals was named Vision 2020. So, what were some of those goals? And again, I mean, you already kind of touched on some of that. Where are we on the Vision 2020? What would it achieve if it were fully implemented?
Well, full implementation of a vision is difficult, right?
Yeah.
Because these are things that are almost optimum. Vision 2020 really had two primary goals, and I think the first one was to make sure that the education community, practitioners, those who are on the front lines, have a real say, because those are the folks who really deal with the reform movements. And most of those folks have good intentions as well, but we've also seen that maybe the practical implementation of some of those reforms is a lot different than what they even planned it to be. So, we wanted to get that educator's voice involved. So, to the credit of the School Superintendent's Association and Dr. Brent Clark, they took on a visioning project to begin to define what direction public education could go. And I think Dr. Clark very wisely recognized that, you know, this needed to be larger than just the superintendents. So, he made an effort to reach out to other education stakeholders. The School Board Association, the Principals Association, the business officials, the regional offices of education, and the superintendent's center for diversity in education. And then we had lots of meetings, surveys, where 3,000 educators kind of provided input as to the direction, and we came up with a vision document. And what we'd like to see in four key areas, highly effective educators, 21st century technology in our classrooms, shared accountability, what we just talked about, and lastly, funding. So, we have position statements and a paper that covers each of those areas. Out of that, we develop legislative agenda, and we're real pleased that two of our key pieces of legislation were signed into law this year. One has to do with teacher reciprocity, and that goes to the pillar of highly effective educators. We believe that there are some really, really high-quality teachers in surrounding states, and really across this country, that we're having a lot of trouble getting into Illinois. So, we helped support and pass a reciprocity bill that goes part of the way.
What was wrong with them, or what was the hard part about them? So, if someone moved here from Indiana or Minnesota, and they might have been, had 15 years or 20 years as a teacher, they may not be able to practice or get into the classroom?
Right, and that's part of, you know, well-intended policies of the past, trying to tighten up the quality pool, right? But, maybe to the point where there was an unintended consequence. So, some of that was corrected. I personally feel we have some more we could do in that area, and hopefully, that would have to do with centering around making sure we have an adequate population of minority candidates in the state. We still need to do work in that area. But this is a key, I think, piece of legislation, because it gets us moving back toward the right direction on highly effective teachers. There are several other components of that, that we didn't get to this year, that we hope to in the future. A second one is the shared accountability that I discussed, and that's that balanced methodology. That bill has passed, there is now going to be formed at the state level, a committee that is going to work out the details as to how that balance should take place, so that we measure assessment still. I mean, that's a significant part of the new balance, I think 30% in the new model, is still how kids do on that state assessment, the one that compares us to other states and to the standards. So, that's still there. But we also think school districts should be held accountable for all of those types of things that we say they have to do, and life safety, curricular mandates, certification mandates, things that they have to do. The regional superintendents currently annually check to make sure schools are up to snuff on all these things, we put that in there. But more importantly, we put a contextual piece, where schools can tell the story of what they're doing for their community, outside of the assessment and outside of all the mandates and those things. How are you, as the educational institution in your community, providing a quality education that's helping your kids? In some communities, they have a dual-credit welding program that they've worked out with employers in the area, and community colleges, and some places have cadaver programs, it's supplying medical industry, some have great technology programs. So, we think school districts should be able to use those types of programs as part of being held accountable. So, Vision 2020 has really, I think, opened the eyes of educators as to how much they can do if they get involved. Now, the second part of it, I want to mention this, because for years, we've kind of been, you know, a little bit guilty of not telling our story and not jumping in there. We've been against a lot of things, and we still are, there are things we oppose, but we also have to be for some things. And this document and this movement kind of defines what we're for, not just what concerns us.
And I was going to say, to what extent, as you're doing this, and you're on the management side of education, a lot of the groups that you've mentioned on the Vision 2020, what about Illinois Federation of Teachers, the IEA, the teachers' unions, are they on board with you? I mean, everybody would say they're for quality education.
Right.
But sometimes there's some snags along the way as far as the one group, are you working effectively with the teachers' unions, or-
Well, I think we are. Look, I think there are some things in the document that they may be concerned about. Sometimes, we come from different places on mandates, for example, but I think you're also correct in that they're not against high-quality education, and they certainly would be in favor of the investment we want to make in professional development that's contained in that document. But, as far as coming on board as endorsers, not yet, you know, we're hopeful, we continue to work with them, but we respect their position certainly on some of those issues. But, Parent Teachers Association has endorsed it at the state level, Horace Mann has endorsed this, the Center for Tax and Budget Accountability, and the Ounce and Prevention Fund. Those are, well as a dozen other organizations, who said, "You know, this is what we want to help support." So, we are working with large group of stakeholders, and certainly want to continue to work with the two major teacher associations in the state, to see where we can find common ground and work together toward the visioning that we have for public education.
Have you discussed the support is of the Vision 2020 plan? Have you discussed, like, how would you measure success?
Yes. And a subcommittee of the original group has begun to discuss that. Now, you also have to understand that Illinois just received a waiver from the original no child left behind law that includes some pretty specific steps that have to be taken. So, we have to intertwine what the waiver requires and the additional thoughts that we have, that we believe help determine whether a school is functioning in their community to provide high-quality education. But there are a lot of areas of agreement, and I mentioned the contextual part, where you can really kind of tell your story, you have an opportunity to discuss what things in your community you're doing to support college and career readiness that may not be in an assessment. And, you know, we're excited to get down to the details on that, and, you know, part of it, again, is how do you do that? And this model kind of envisions the idea that there would be a team that would come to a school and measure some of those things that you can't measure just with the assessment.
I've heard teachers over the years say, basically, they're suffering from, I guess, reform fatigue, you might say. It seems like whether it's no child left behind, or now Vision 2020, that every so many years, there's some new reform idea that's then being implemented. And one of the things they were saying was that they were always forced to teach to the test.
Yeah.
So that their school would look good on paper, but that they often felt that the child wasn't really getting a rounded education. Maybe they weren't teaching them Shakespeare and English classes, because that wasn't going to be on the test, or I'm making that one up, but I just have it for instance. Is that a legitimate concern, or do you hear this from your own school boards?
Well, I think any time the stakes are so high related to the outcome of an assessment, and we do have high-stake assessments, and, you know, recently, the Gallup poll has shown that the public thinks we've gone too far with that notion, and that causes a narrowing of curriculum. If, you know, you have to do well on this series of tests or assessments, then what aren't you doing? What other things, you know, aren't you doing? There's a healthy balance, I think, between making sure, and remember, we're talking about literacy, language arts, and math, vital areas, right? And we're going to add science to that, vital area that we want to make sure our students do well in. Now, we don't want to do it at the expense of other areas. I have five kids, my own, they're all different. You know, I have an art teacher in my family, I have a young lady who went to school on a music scholarship. Now, I don't, you know, I want to measure-
They're not all uprisers, right?
Right. I don't want to measure, and I don't think we, maybe inadvertently go this direction, we put so much high stake on this test, that even kids themselves begin to measure their own value based on how they do on this test, rather than the whole child. And we need to move assessment back into the area that it's intended. I was a teacher, I mean, I've been involved in education 35 years. I've seen the old A160s, I've seen the DLOs, I've seen the SLOs, I've seen the Illinois Learner Standards, I can talk to you about all those reforms that those teachers say come and go. And we do have to be careful not to get caught up in the latest movement, because it seems as the political winds blow, those priorities change, right? From the notion of no child left behind, where every child, by 2014, every child, despite the fact that we have some who have disabilities, some pretty significant ones, are going to all perform at the same level. Now, that notion was crazy, and 2014 came and went, and guess what? Not all kids perform at the same level, not all kids are the same.
Can I, I was going to say, as you, given your history, you've been in education, as you mentioned, for decades, has there been through the years, these reforms, have we upped the level of performance? I mean, one of the complaints about education in general is that we have spent a lot more over the years on education, and yet we're not seeing any performance improvement on national tests of education. So, some argue, and I'm sure you've heard this before, that we're just not getting our bang for the buck.
Well, what I hear from parents is pretty much the opposite of that. Wow, my fifth grader is doing algebra or pre-algebra, I can't even help them with this. When I was in school, we weren't doing it. So, I think we have substantially increased the expectation level, I don't think that's a bad thing, I think it's a good thing that we have. I think sometimes, though, we haven't provided, you know, some of the support resources that are necessary, all children are not the same. We have to make sure that we don't leave something behind, but you have to do that with the proper supports. When Illinois switched over to the learning standards in 1997, there was a huge pool of funding that came with it called Goals 2000 money, and that allowed teachers the time to kind of crosswalk curriculum into the new Illinois Learner Standards, right? And they had training, they were able to purchase support materials, there were even sites set up where lessons were shared that actually support that standard. I think one of the problems we faced in this current reform movement to move toward Common Core, this higher-level thinking set of standards, is we don't have a lot of resources right now. We tried to implement a major change without professional development and resources in order to help support that movement, and at the same time, you said reform fatigue, and at the same time, there are a whole host of other reforms related to evaluations and related to other types of practices. So, you get tired, and over the course of a career, some people have seen two or three iterations of this change, so they're even more skeptical, and they're kind of, their attitude is, "This too shall pass," right? And that's kind of maybe what you're hearing from teachers, is, "Oh, here we go again."
Well, not just teachers, but I think when people look, different people bring it up.
Right.
But they'll say, "Look, we're spending more and more and more over the last 30 years on education, but our standardized tests are not going up in, with the financial line."
Well, when you change the assessment, the scores are probably not going to go up until you have that time, and that's with the PARK. The first administration of the PARK was last spring, there are likely to be diminished scores, right? But you're measuring a child's knowledge, skills, and abilities against a set of curricular standards that were recently implemented. And in fact, if you're an 11th grader, right, even under the best of circumstances, if five years ago, your school went all-in on Common Core, and they had the resources to purchase, and they did the professional development, you're in the 11th grade, maybe you've had four years based on this new curriculum, but you're being tested, your assessment is based on that, while your education, a majority of it, was under a different set of standards. So, you can't expect those students at that level. Now, some people favored kind of a balanced implementation, start with the elementary, move the standards, put your resources, move them up, and that didn't win out. I mean, what we did was we tried, and we are still trying to implement across the board. So, this fall, when the scores come out, the appearance could be that students have somehow, you know, or schools have failed to provide the education, when it's really just a different assessment that we're measuring students against, and we're obviously not going to have the same scores.
When we have the PARK you had mentioned, is that, how often throughout the school year is that test implemented? Is it a one-time, is it a four-time?
Well, it's twice this year, and I think we're going to go to a one-time assessment next year, but we're going to add science eventually. One of the key concerns of a lot of people in education is the amount of time we're assessing students and the amount of time we're teaching them. Heard a guy from the Business Roundtable one time say, "You know, I don't care how many times I weigh my livestock, unless I feed it, it's not going to get any heavier." So, you know, we have to make sure that we put some resources in the actual education, and we need to do it on an individual basis, kind of comprehensive base, so, you know, every child has an education based on their skills, abilities, and level. And if that takes certain supports for some students, great, we have to figure out a way to do that. So, I'm- out a way to do that. So I'm hopeful that we can find the good in this new assessment system and look for ways to improve student performance and improve teaching and learning and and not use this in a method that the public's not buying anyway. I mean, the Gallup poll has just demonstrated that public just
Because we're going to run short, I want to get a couple of things in. One relative to, you're saying that the state of Illinois adopted the Common Core, and as you well know, that's very controversial. Even at the presidential election, we hear this, people talking against Jeb Bush because he had in the past given some support to Common Core. You hear horror stories that instead of saying five times seven is 35, that they go through a labyrinth process that takes five minutes to come up with that. Are those legitimate criticisms? And and what would we get from Common Core? And why do we even need it, I guess? Why do we need to have different process of teaching math?
Well, obviously, the attempt was to improve the learner standards, the Illinois learner standards, by adopting a set of standards which are called the Common Core standards that require students to use higher-level thinking skills in order to solve problems in math. And now, now, the criticism has been that, you know, some of the traditional methodologies in in teaching are being changed significantly. And there probably are some examples of inappropriate application. And I also mentioned earlier the political winds blow, right? And as parents, I I think, see some of those things that that aren't not necessarily settling well, that those who are interested in the political side of this use that in a manner to to
Are those criticisms legitimate to some extent? And and if they are legitimate, is there any way to go and say, hey, there's nothing wrong with learning the multiplication tables?
Right.
Maybe we need a higher level of thinking, but we don't need a higher level of thinking to tie your shoes. You don't want to be
Right, right, right. But I think if you took the Illinois learner standards that are in place before the new standards, and and you were able to find an isolated instance where someone was misapplying a lesson, that doesn't speak to whether or not the standards are appropriate or effective. It speaks to a lesson that doesn't seem to be well-received. So I think you can do that no matter what the set of standards are. Now, I think with Common Core, again, a lot of folks saw it as a federal government pushdown, that's as the Department of Education program. These standards in Illinois had the input of a lot of Illinois educators. It had a lot of college folks that that have sat. And so I I think, again, the there is a lot of misinformation. There is a lot of concern based on maybe a few examples. But we could have done that with the Illinois learner standards that are in place now. It is a political issue right now. And I think you're seeing some states, by the way, who have now gone away from using Common Core and PARC. Several states dropped out of the PARC consortium because of political pressure, and most notably, New York. But they're still using some of the same assessments. But politically, it wasn't, you know, in vogue to continue to be part of the Common Core movement or the PARC consortium. So they got out of it. So we we face that. And that's my concern. It always is my concern, that these things become political. That's why we like things to be local. We like things to stay away from the federal pushdown. It doesn't mean every good, everything that comes out of the federal government or the Department of Education is is bad. But again, you get back to the mandates. Local boards of education know what's best for their students in most cases, and they're elected by folks locally. So the big argument is, in those localities, why would the federal government choose your curriculum or push it down to that level? That's a lot of the pushback.
Let me ask you, just again, time ran short, but one of the things relative to this whole budget standoff, and one of the things the governor wants to do is cap property taxes, that they've gone up and up and up. Illinois does have high property taxes, I think, when you compare them to a variety of states. Another, and let's just because we could talk for hours on education, obviously, but another issue was, and maybe we can combine the answer again, Senator Menard was saying, you know, you look at some of the monies in the concentrated areas of Chicago suburbs where they have 300, 500, 600, $1,000 homes, those schools are getting a flood of tax dollars. Other areas where he represents in central Illinois, they're agricultural. The home values might be $40,000, $50,000. And he's saying we need to have some sharing of financial resources, I'm going to basically say. What's the answer, would you say, from both your experience as a downstate educator, but also a downstate lawmaker? I mean, are these legitimate issues relative to what Senator Menard is saying? And one, and two, if we cap the property taxes, would that be strangling the school's ability to manage themselves financially?
Well, under the current circumstances, it would, because we haven't addressed the issue of the funding formula. And and the funding formula is meant to take care of the disparity that you described. Where there is property value, right, they're not supposed to receive state aid, as much state aid. They have a flat grant district. The the types of districts you're talking about are flat grant. They get a couple hundred dollars per student, and that's it. Okay?
The poorer student, the poorer neighborhood.
The rich districts. They don't get as much state aid because they have local property tax. And the way the formula works, there's an offset there. If you have so much per-pupil wealth, then you go into this category, and you don't get very much state aid. Where the problem is, in my view, is the foundation level funding. The $6119 we talked about earlier, if we were funding it at 6119, that disparity wouldn't be as wide. Because those folks that still don't get general state aid because they have property wealth, they wouldn't be affected, right? But those folks who don't have the property wealth, they rely on the formula. So the idea is the formula. It needs to be adjusted. We tinkered with it many, many, many times. And I think that's what Senator Menard attempted to do. His original iterations of this, so caused a lot of districts to lose money, and and there were winners and losers. So we're hoping that the the next approach to this contains kind of a hold harmless. We don't want everyone to be equitably inadequately funded. We have to have equity with adequacy. Now, as far as the property tax freeze proposal, boards of education don't like high property taxes either. I mean, they would like to see a more balanced approach. But what what the biggest fear is, is you're you're messing with what is the sustainable and reliable source of funding for all school districts because it doesn't pass through Springfield. They're worried. If they're getting it from Springfield, are they going to get it? If the money goes from the property tax holder to the county collector, straight to the school district, you don't have Springfield involved. Look at corporate personal property replacement tax, right? That goes out to some school districts, but it goes through Springfield first. A few years ago, when the regional superintendents weren't getting paid, we had to dip into corporate personal property replacement to pay them. That was Governor Quinn's idea at the time. That that further, you know, kind of made credible the theory that you can't send it to Springfield or you won't get what you're supposed to back. So how do we fix it? How do we move away from this overreliance on property taxes, right? Because there's this inequity that is is inherent in that, to a a system where you have other ways to fund education that are also sustainable and reliable, but you know you're going to get the money? You know, if you had a sales tax increase, for example, to offset this property tax freeze, how do you know you're going to get it when the sales tax goes to Springfield? Because just about every few years, the local government distributor fund is a target of reduction.
Right.
So boards of education are saying, wait a minute, you know, we
In essence, again, for those watching, sometimes different administrations will say, we're going to hold on to this money, even though technically it's not the state's money, it's just passing through their hands.
Yeah. So so we we're concerned about that. The other thing that concerns me related to the proposal, and this is just a nuance that
Which proposal, when you say?
Well, the the property tax freeze. PTAL is a front door where the cap takes place at CPI or 5%. And we haven't been anywhere close to 5% CPI, right?
Right.
So the counties get to choose that on their own. It goes on a ballot, and people vote locally. Well, one of the proposals in in the freeze is that everybody goes under PTAL, the whole state. They don't have the opportunity at the local level to reject it. And I think that disenfranchises folks in counties that have voted against it. You're really completely saying to them, we don't, we know you voted against this. We we understand that you don't think it's good for you, but we're going to implement these caps anyway. And I think that's dangerous government. I I think it's dangerous for the General Assembly to reverse the actions of these counties that have said, you know, we looked at this. We had a vote of the people of our area. And and it's very much against the philosophy of local control and local governance that this administration seems to support. So those are a couple of things. We also really would like to see if there is this property tax freeze, some type of relief in mandates, so districts can begin to to deal with it during the time that they're frozen. But, you know, local boards of education hear these complaints more than anyone. And they would love to be able to hold the line, but they can't because the formula doesn't allow them to. They have to levy to a certain extent or they're punished. And the other thing, and the final thing related to it, is we've got to talk about equity rates, too, and how assessments take place that affect your final bill. I mean, there are some representatives who have done some pretty dramatic presentations about the difference in the amount of a property tax bill for a home in some of those suburban areas that you talked about, and then the amount that it is compared to a home in Chicago that's assessed much differently. So there's that equity issue that has to be discussed as well. But those are discussions that need to take place. The property tax freeze bill also has in a component that just kind of throws the the current formula out in two years, right? It's a bold move at a time when we can't decide a budget. What if we don't, in two years, come up with a new formula? If we don't have a formula, does anything get distributed? Or do we just go back? Is this really a deadline? Is this really an attempt? Or is this a way out? So, you know, we're working with the governor's office, and we're working with those that listen.
Does the governor's office talk with, to your knowledge, do they seek input from stakeholders around?
Our experience has been that that they have. They've asked us about certain proposals, and we've provided input. We try not to be overly critical because everybody, I think, wants some deal to to take place that's going to, you know, solve all of the ills, which will be difficult because there are a lot of issues. But we also work with the speaker's office, and and we work with Leader Durkin, or certainly President Colleton, Leader Redonia, whichever the caucuses contact us. And we just try to provide kind of a history, and it's always based on our delegate assembly positions and our grassroots, our people, you know, that that actually represent school board members get together and kind of direct our our government lobbying. So I'm pleased with our position as far as input. You know, you want to win all the time, but you want to be there, too. What is it, what is it always saying? If you're not at the table, you might be on the menu? So you want to make sure you're there. And so far, we've had good dialogue with the governor's office.
Well, these are a lot of complicated issues, and we appreciate you taking the time to go over with them. Hopefully, we can revisit it again. I know it's a lot to digest for anyone at one time and when you're listening to this. But like I say, as the year develops and and Vision 2020 gets a little history under it, maybe we can kind of revisit this and see how it goes. But we appreciate you taking the time to talk with us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Eric.